Good evening and welcome to August 5, 2021 Board of Education meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order. At this time, Mr. Vaughn Craft will lead us in the invocation.
Thank you. So I'm reading from Random Acts of Kindness and Illustrated Celebration. Last year, I had occasion to get acquainted with a homeless man who lived at the top of a freeway off-ramp in Los Angeles. Every day on my way to work, as I sat waiting for the light to change, I would talk to Ed about life, homelessness, hopefulness, and the weather, the weather being of vital importance to Ed. We became close, always asking about the other's family, mine in L.A., his on the East Coast. He rarely asked me for money, and I usually tried to bring him some food. Once, when he had dental problems, I brought him bananas, dried soup, and aspirin. Ed had many other regulars who tried to help him. When I decided to leave L.A. for a job in Florida, I had one final detail to attend to: my car. It was an ugly 1970 Dodge Dart, but it ran great. I put a lot of money into it, but the most I could get for it was $90 from a wrecking yard. I wanted it to go to someone who could and would make use of it, and Ed was the logical choice. He had dreams and plans. He wanted to return to trade school, which he had dropped out of as a younger man. The week before I left, I offered to give Ed the car. With enthusiasm, he accepted, going on and on about it being the answer to his problems. We took care of the paperwork. I paid for his license renewal, and then delivered the car with cans of oil, air, and oil filters, and a trunk, he calls his garage, full of paper plates, paper towels, canned food, clothes, and an L.A. essential, an earthquake kit. As we stood next to the car on a Saturday morning, Ed said he had worked out a deal with a local parking lot owner. He would sweep the lot every day in exchange for a covered place to park his house. He told me that he had been offered a job as a dishwasher in a new upscale restaurant near his off-ramp. It turns out that another driver, who regularly gave Ed food and money, had bought the restaurant and asked him to work there at a really good wage. As we hugged goodbye, I said, "Ed, it looks like your ship has come in." He replied with tears in his eyes, "It's not only come in, I get to go onboard." And in every one of these little stories, there's a quote, and it says, "You have not lived a perfect day, even though you have earned your money, unless you have done something for someone who will never be able to repay you." Ruth Smeltzer. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craft. If everyone will stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Hail to the republic, where we stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment session. The public comment session is a time when an individual or a group can address the board about our schools. This is not a time to speak about issues or concerns involving identifiable personnel or students. Matters of this nature should be submitted in writing to the superintendent, and your concerns will be addressed. Individuals or groups will be called in the order in which they signed up and be asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. At this time, we have Mr. Robert Griffin that has signed up tonight. Welcome, Robert. You'll state your name and address, please.
Yes, Robert Griffin, 436 Poplar Branch Road in Poplar Branch. So members of the Board of Education, good evening.
Good evening.
The start of a new school year has arrived, and it is so good to have students returning to school buildings. While there are some who were successful in the virtual learning environment, the majority were not. And the last 18 months have been difficult for so many. And that means that this year will be different from any other. Acclimating students back into school buildings requires us to recognize that the routine of school has changed. This year will not be business as usual. As teachers, the curriculum that we teach is important, but I believe that our primary concern this year will be for the overall well-being of our students. A familiar quote from Theodore Roosevelt says, "Nobody cares how much you know until they know how much you care." And I believe we will find that to be especially true this year. For students and parents, they need to know that our staff is a caring staff and is concerned about their children. Because this year is not business as usual, I want to acknowledge the preparation and planning that our leadership has been working on for this year. The additional planning that has been required for this particular school year must have been a daunting task. It's understandable that some strategic plans and curriculum decisions have had to be tabled temporarily in order to focus on the reality that this pandemic has created. I am excited to start this school year. Seeing students in person is what I am called to do. As a teacher at Currituck County High School, I am excited for the leadership that Dr. Durham is providing, and I fully expect this to be a great school year. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a first and I have a second. Any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Albert must not have been able to make it tonight. He was going to give us an update concerning the student board member reports that they usually...
Ms. Dowdy, if I could, on their behalf. Daniel Walker is currently attending FFA leadership training, officer training, so he was unable to make it with us. And Mr. Mercado had quite the busy day, because as you know, he began his first, first-last day of school, last-first day of school, rather, excuse me, as JP Knapp Early College began school today. As you noticed, if we walked out of the work session, Albert was taking his senior photos with a photographer on campus at JP Knapp Early College. So I don't believe either one of them could make it this evening. In preparation for it, they did just want to give a shout-out to JP Knapp Early College, who did begin school today, and they know that everybody's working so hard to be prepared for what Mr. Griffin spoke about, and the excitement of a regular, traditional, hopefully to stay all the way through, school year for everyone. So unfortunately, neither of them could be here tonight, but they did want to pass along their best regards.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Dowdy. Title I approval. Dr. Matt Lutz is going to bring us up to date. And just so the public knows, and the citizens of Currituck know, we had a work session earlier that started about 4:15 today. So a lot of these topics, we've talked about them in length, and we're very familiar with them, but we want the public to understand what we have already discussed, and Dr. Lutz will bring everyone up to date.
Okay. Title I is a federal program that helps our buildings with the most, with high free and reduced lunch population in the building, in other words, students that need extra assistance. Our program is tailored around the K-5 elementary schools, and we have included Central, Jarvisburg, Griggs, and Shawboro in our plan. They were the eligible elementary schools. Knott's Island also is eligible. We did not include them in the plan, but we will continue to fund Knott's Island at the same rate as if they were part of our plan. That was due to just the difficulty of working within the program when it comes to per pupil allocation. We did receive $564,000 this year approximately, which is about a $20,000 increase over the previous year. We had slowly been declining in what we had received from the federal government. We're able to fund five teachers with this funding, and also about three teacher aides.
And just to clarify, Dr. Lutz, for the public who may be watching, just simplistically, the Knott's Island is just because there is much smaller school for residents who don't or not familiar.
Yes.
It's just a much smaller school, so it just was easier to break that out than trying to put it in the formula.
Yes, so part of our, thank you for pointing out. Part of our plan was, we actually wrote in the plan that we will fund Knott's Island at the same funding, and we'll use local dollars to support Knott's Island. It just makes it easier to do that than to put them in the direct plan.
Thank you.
And as Mr. Goins also pointed out, I mean, we have honored that, and we'll continue to honor that as well, including the parent engagement funds.
Okay. Thank you very much. Strategic Plan presentation.
Well, don't we need to approve that?
It doesn't say that it's action.
It does. It should have been an action.
All right, okay. We do need action on the Title I plan.
So I move that we approve the Title I plan.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Dr. Dobney seconds it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So that is approved for the Title I. Strategic Plan presentation. Dr. Lutz and Ms. Renee Dowdy will bring us up to date on the strategic plan.
So as we get ready to show you our current work here on the strategic plan, and Robert, part of our mission and purpose again is to, you know, we're in a business of education and taking care of our students, and those plans got our work. And so we're very excited with what we've come up with, with the strategic plan. Ms. Dowdy's going to kind of walk us through the timeline, how we gathered the information, and where we're at with next steps. We're in the action step process, embedding those out, and once that is completed, we look forward to sharing that as our final document for everyone to take a look at.
I have to say, it was as if Mr. Griffin had some premonition that we were going to have this, because he segued beautifully into what we're going to talk about. As he said, you know, COVID did cause us to push pause on some things, and at the end of the day, if we don't take care of our kids' most basic of needs, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, that being those of, you know, physiological and social-emotional and well-being, love and relationships, the work we do behind the scenes, whether it's with our district strategic plan or Ms. Christine Hodges' curricular strategic plan that she's been working on with our staff, none of it matters. So I was kind of pleased that Mr. Griffin so eloquently set us up for talking about today's strategic plan. So we're going to share again. We consider this still to be in draft format, and we consider this to be in draft format because we still find ourselves tweaking this as a district-level team, getting feedback from all of our stakeholders. So when we preface this presentation, please note that we do still consider it a draft for that. So on Slide 2, if you will, you will see a timeline of the process. I think that COVID years should be kind of like dog years. For every one we survived of COVID, it should be 10, it feels like, because I look at February of 2021, and I think that seems like forever ago, and it really wasn't that long ago. But we did begin this process, forming our district strategic team, back in late February. As you see through that timeline, from then on through this summer, we've had lots of team meetings, team trainings with Dr. Mitch Owen, who we contracted with for the purpose of facilitating this district strategic plan, and then listening sessions. Really, the meat of this process is about listening to our stakeholders. So on the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about who those stakeholders were and the types of data points we collected from everybody. So that brings us all the way to this summer, where we have completed an actual draft of our strategic plan. Earlier in the work session, I provided you a copy. I apologize, I thought we were going to do it in the work session too, so I got a little anxious and ahead of myself. But you do have a copy of both this presentation and a copy of the draft strategic plan in your handouts. So part of this process most certainly surrounded itself in the stakeholder input area. And so throughout our listening sessions that were referenced on that timeline, before you saw that we had different stakeholder groups coming in. About 400 people in total participated in all those listening sessions, whether that was at the elementary level, middle, high school level, district administrative staff, parents, all of the above. Over 7,500 data points were collected, and I teased when we presented this to our administrative team. Ms. Yvette Jones, Ms. Sharon Boone in our office, and Ms. Sarah Banks, who we contracted with to come back and help us out, hand keyed over 7,500 data points into an Excel spreadsheet for us of all those sticky notes that we collected all that feedback from. So thanks to them, she told me if I ever handed her another sticky note, I was fired. So I will not do that right now. But we are appreciative of their efforts to help kind of curate all of that data that we collected. So who were those stakeholder groups? You saw in the listening sessions, we did specific targeted listening sessions, but that wasn't it. So we did talk to staff, students, and parents. That's from administrators to custodians to bus drivers to all of the above, parents, elected officials, business owners, community leaders, all those types of people we spoke with. In addition to that, we conducted over 136 one-on-one interviews with our teams. So, you know, while we may not have had people come to our parent listening sessions, we had a low turnout, unfortunately, but we get it, it happens. We conducted interviews specifically with parents. So while many of them didn't come to our listening session, we still reached out to them and met them where they were and conducted one-on-one interviews with them to get their input. Part of the process is to identify external forces that impact us and our successes in the present and in the future. And so on the next slide, you'll see some of the forces that were identified as those forces that potentially will impact us with regard to the work we do in meeting these strategic initiatives that you'll see coming up shortly. So again, some of those are on there, things that we can control, external forces, things we can't control, whether that's funding at a federal, state, or, you know, local level, the increased need for mental health support for our students and staff and families in our community. And of course, social media's influence was a big one that people talked about quite frequently during this process. As part of this process, we also identified our core values. I'm not going to read all these to you, but these are those belief statements, that we believe, these are those things that we hold true of ourselves, all the staff that work for us, and what we want for our colleagues and for our students. So we identified some core values, and we talked amongst leadership teams that, you know, this is the thing that we're going to sit down and say, hey, does this match up with what we say we believe? Because if it doesn't, then we need to look at this practice again, because we are holding ourselves to these beliefs, these core values. So then, the process evolved into drafting, taking all those 7,500 data points, all the interviews, all the listening session data, and then coming up with, how do we then narrow it down to where we think we need to put our focus? We could have written a plan that was hundreds of pages long with hundreds of different initiatives, but we knew that's not a working plan. We know that that would be the plan that sits on a shelf and never gets touched, because it's not something that's tangible to everybody. This work of drafting the strategic initiatives, again, I've said it before, and I'll continue to say it again, Dr. Lutz didn't write these initiatives. Renee Downing did not write these initiatives. Our district team comprised of every grade level, every grade span, from district administrators to teachers at the ground level, all the above were represented in this district team. That district team, under the direction of Mitch Owen, sat down, and he facilitated how to synthesize all that data and then narrow a focus down to initiatives. And so we've chosen three district initiatives that you'll see presented to focus on, again in draft format, but nonetheless, three initiatives. And as we accomplish those goals and initiatives, we'll go back to the table and the data points and start adding additional ones in. So the first one, again, speaking to Mr. Griffin's point, is about developing the whole child. It's not just about academics, it's also about social-emotional as well. So in this strategic initiative, it's, our statement was that Currituck County Schools will develop the whole student by providing a wide array of programs and services to meet their academic, intellectual, and social-emotional needs. So under that overarching initiative, you'll see smaller, more tangible, specific steps in order to get to that goal. Ms. Rose has often talked about the bullying training. Again, we put it on there, we're going to accomplish this goal that all schools, grades K-5 and 6-8 are trained in the Olvea's Training, which we've begun that process, and by fall of next year, every school grades K through 8 should be trained on that process. Again, I can read through all the initiatives to you, you have a copy of it in front of you. You'll see through other, we talked about accreditation, it's on here. We're going to meet the goal of getting that high school accredited and then move to district accreditation, so you'll see that on there as well. The second initiative focuses more on the staff part of it, recruiting and retaining high-quality staff members in Currituck County. So again, this goal was to create a desirable work environment, where highly qualified professionals and support personnel will want to work and are motivated to grow. We believe in growing our own so that we can take teacher leaders, grow them into, hopefully, future administrators, hopefully, future district administrative staff, so that that pipeline keeps replenishing itself here in our own county. So you'll see some of those. Obviously, we've got some obstacles to it. We, unfortunately, Ms. Jamie Miller can kind of attest to, we've had two folks turn us down most recently for job applications because they can't find places to live. We know we've got a tough row to hoe, and some of the things that we cannot control. However, there still are lots of things we can control about our culture and environment that hopefully we'll continue to work on so that when we have some help with housing or the market decides to even itself back out, that doesn't become such a roadblock for staff. And finally, our last initiative really focuses on our community and engaging our community in our schools. Last year, we shut everybody out and said, unfortunately, you can't come in, and we're hopeful that this year, that has all changed, it will remain that way, so that we can continue to engage our stakeholders in our school system. We often talked about, as a product of Currituck County Schools, this was always a place where everybody thought, man, that's one of the places I want to be, whether I was a student, whether I was a parent, now I'm a parent, or, you know, whether I was a teacher back, I came back home to teach because I wanted to come back here and be in the same community that helped to raise me. So this is about engaging that community back in the process. So you'll see some things in here about making sure our parents know what we're doing, telling our story to our parents, making sure they understand what happens in our schools, also engaging them in a lot of our activities, you know, and we talk about it all the time. K-5, you've got lots of parents that come in the doors, and then it wanes in 6-8, and then it wanes even further in 9-12 unless they're watching an athletic event. So how do we reengage our community back into our schools, not just for the athletics, which is hugely important, but also for the academic side of things? So those are our three strategic initiatives. We're super excited about the work that's ahead of us. We're a little nervous because we set some ambitious goals for ourselves in the midst of coming off a post-COVID year, where we do have some things that we know we need to take care of first. But we're excited that this gives us direction. It's the first time I've felt like, in our district, both as an educator, district administrator, that we have something that seems tangible and concrete for us to work towards. So it's super exciting work.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Dowdy. I'm excited. I mean, some really good and valuable information in the strategic plan and the timeline of the process that we went through. And we were, we were at one of the meetings where we put the sticky notes, and I think you had, how many did you have total, like six?
Of those listening sessions?
Yes.
We had a joint meeting with the board and the commissioners, and we had a total of four other listening sessions that were large meetings, so a total of those types of meetings.
Okay, well, they were very beneficial, and I thank you all for your hard work. Here we have our first reading of Policies 4400, and that's the attendance, and 3620 was, which is the extracurricular activities in student organizations. Dr. Matt Lutz and Ms. Renee Dowdy.
So we intentionally placed the attendance policy on the board agenda and the work agenda so that we can make sure our parents are aware of the expectations and changes to the attendance policy. There was much consternation over the attendance policy the past few years. The School Boards Association must have heard it from beyond Currituck as well, as they made several changes that we think are appropriate to adopt. So Ms. Dowdy, want to kind of walk us through the attendance process? There was a great deal of discussion throughout the previous year with COVID, and how do we take, attendance would never stop being a discussion. The one part that, as we walked through here too as well, I was very excited to see an addendum in here into the policy that speaks to arriving late to school, leaving early, and the responsibility of remaining in school for the duration of the day and being on time so you can get the education that we are going to provide you, so that we're all part of this working together. And so getting our kids to school in a timely manner and allowing them to stay the full day is very, very important for us to move forward as a district.
All right, so a reminder again, this is first read of policy because we had tabled it previously. So today, during the work session, just for the general public's information, we went in depth, step by step, through this revision of the policy. It's a little hard for the public to follow when they don't have a copy of the revisions in front of them. But to Dr. Lutz's point, what we heard in the policy really was not a significant amount of changes, just relocation of certain parts of the policy and different verbiage to cover, things like excessive absences are now going to be called chronic absenteeism. But just to kind of cover a few things, Dr. Lutz was correct in that new to the policy and the public will be able to expect, the board policy will now cover late arrivals and early dismissals. And for all of our parents out there listening, as we get ready to start school, every moment counts, from the time the tardy bell rings to the time the dismissal bell rings at the end of the day. And while our K through 8 students and K through 10 students really can't control how they get to school, because most of the time that's via mom and dad, it's hugely important that our parents understand that that tardy bell means they should be in their seats ready to learn. And so we're asking them for their partnership and making sure that they arrive to school on time, and please leave them in school until the dismissal bell rings. I know the drop-off lines can be bad. I'm a mom of a Shawboro parent, I know what that line looks like at the end of the day, but getting there and picking up your kid 10 minutes before that dismissal bell rings means they're missing instruction, and it shouldn't be a pattern of behavior. Every once in a while, when you've got a dentist appointment, we get those things, but let's not have it be a pattern of behavior. So the policy now does speak to late arrivals and early dismissals. Excused absences are still part of the policy, nothing changed in regards to what's excused and unexcused in those policies. It did still highlight that school-related activities, such as Daniel Walker, had we been in school today and he was attending FFA training, would be an excused absence because of a school-related activity. Make-up work in this section is one that we talked about at link today in the board work session. So I talked with Ms. Yvette Jones previously about that. The State Boards Association does have guidelines sometimes that they implement in addition to policy. So when the board decides to adopt a policy, we can also go back in and put guidelines for the implementation of that policy in. So I think, Ms. Rose, you had asked a little bit about trying to put some type of guidance in that policy specifically around make-up work or excused/unexcused absences, so that our staff had some type of standardization in that process. So a student who was in Mr. A's class and a student who was in Mr. B's class didn't have two separate rules to play by. They all had the level playing field. So with Ms. Jones's help, we will contact them to see if there's some guidelines already in existence that we can use as a draft to which start working on those guidelines specific to Currituck County Schools. Compulsory attendance law is still in effect, so when students have three unexcused absences, six unexcused absences, 10 unexcused absences, there are processes in place for us to notify parents. It's important for parents to know that if students have unexcused absences that accumulate, that can lead to the possibility, after some investigation, that we may have to file petition with juvenile court for truancy. And so we hope that it doesn't ever get to that point. We try really hard to intervene and help families out in situations in which there is some chronic absenteeism, but ultimately, it is a parent's responsibility to make sure their children get to school. And the last part of that policy speaks a little bit to extracurricular activities. So I'm going to transition from our attendance policy into the extracurricular activities and student organizations policy. The recommendation from the State Boards Association was that they, we remove the word "and" in that very first number-one general requirements where it says, "It's a privilege, not a right, and it may be reserved for students in good academic standing who meet behavior standards established by the board, the superintendent, and the school." We want to leave the word "and" instead of "or." So that was the revision we adopted for that policy. But basically, the participation in extracurricular activities, athletics, means that students still must abide by attendance policies, and it's always been the rule that students must be present half a day in order to participate in those types of activities unless there were special circumstances that had been given prior permission for. So those are our two policies. So we will work on contacting the State Boards Association for guidelines surrounding excused/unexcused absences and make-up work.
Thank you, Ms. Dowdy. Mask mandate update. Mask mandate update, Dr. Matt Lutz.
Thank you. As, as our public knows, we, our board passed a resolution regarding making masks optional for the upcoming school year. However, I did want to loop back to the subject and give some reminders as we move forward. JP NAP opened today and it kind of reminded us, okay, we still need to be very clear in terms of expectation, in terms of distancing and so on. We were able to go back to school last year in October, November, and January, and we're very proud of that fact. But part of the reason why we were able to go back to school and stay open is we followed as many protocols as possible to keep our schools open. And so I want to just go through a few reminders and then we're going to come back and make sure we publicize this as our other nine buildings return. So masks are encouraged, but they are not required. So they're encouraged. If you are not vaccinated and you're in the secondary level, a mask is appropriate. If you are masked, you will very likely not have to be quarantined. And I think that's important to point out. If you are vaccinated, you will not have to be quarantined if you're 12 and above. So I do want to point that out. It is required that masks will be worn on transportation. Very likely too, we will be gathering as a group and talking about larger gatherings in the buildings, in gyms, in the auditoriums, and so on. And we, I may make recommendations in the future regarding mask wearing, just so that we limit our exposure, we limit the amount of disruptions as well in terms of quarantines. But we will definitely be keeping masks optional in a traditional setting with the exception of the bus. Cleaning, teachers will be asked to continue to wipe desks and other high-touch surface areas once a day. And if there's evidence of community spread, we will utilize our Clorox 360 machine. One of the, and we will explore any possible use with the Clorox 360 machine. Last year, when we did not have in-person learning on Fridays, we used that in teams of three to cover the entire county, which took, took the day. So we are not ready to continue to do that as we'll be a five-day-a-week school system, but we are fully aware that we may need to use the Clorox 360 machine and we will work to respond as necessary. We are requesting that staff and students, along with their families, conduct their own screenings before they leave the house in the morning. That was when we were getting out, we were checking temperatures. We did away with that in the spring. We did away with that because we found that most people, the huge vast majority of people were not bringing their kids to school if they were sick. We're asking that you continue to honor that so that we can keep our schools open. If you're sick, please stay home. If a household member is awaiting a COVID test result, please do not send your child to school. We had to quarantine an entire class because we had to parent send their child who was potentially sick. Think of the general public. We are, we are proud that we went back to school. We are, we are fortunate that we have great staff and support in this community. And if we follow some very basic guidelines and protocols, we're going to be able to maintain and keep our schools open. I'm happy to announce that we will have, we are partnering, partnering with the Albemarle Regional Health Service and the local health department to host a vaccine clinic for students and their families as well as staff. The first dose clinic will be August 19th from four to six at JP NAP. And the second dose clinic will be September 16th, four to six at the health department. So the first one will be at NAP. We tried to pick a centralized location in the county. And that again will be August 19th and the second dose, September 16th.
So I have one question about the Clorox machine. What's the timeframe before we can return to the classrooms after they have, have used that machine?
Under five minutes.
So it could feasibly be done if it needed to be done?
Yes.
Okay.
It, but.
I mean, it could feasibly be done.
Disinfecting across the entire square.
Right.
I know we have mask mandate on buses. What if we have an activity bus that's carrying just a small number of students? Are they still going to be required to wear masks?
On buses, we have to. It's federal law.
Okay.
Federal, I don't know if it's officially law, but it's policy.
Public transportation.
Right. Well, we have plenty of mask, hand sanitizer, anything like that distributed at all the schools.
Yes.
Still, you know.
Yes, we have a, we still have a, is that correct, Ms. Arrington?
And Clorox wipes for the teachers to use. We don't want them to have to purchase them.
Correct.
And they're still going to be encouraged? Because I had a staff member reach out and said, you know, at some of the schools, they, they think there's the staff and our custodians, but the holes, everyone in the school did a great job of cleaning everything, wiping, just staying on top of it. And they really felt like that had a big impact on keeping, you know, everything seemed to be at bay, not just COVID, but flu, strep, yeah, everything. The kids didn't have any nose. One teacher said she only went through, she barely went through one box of tissues. And that was huge because as teachers on here know, you, I think you go through many. I mean, I know I would send in a lot all the time. So I guess, you know, just try to make sure we have plenty of those supplies on hand and, and always encourage parents to just keep, you know, putting it in their kid's head, just, you know, don't stay apart, don't hug, don't, you know, share, just kind of keep their distance, so.
Absolutely.
Right. Just keep doing what we've been doing. We're not out of the woods yet, so just to keep those protocols in place. We had some field trips that some of our students took. Do you want to go over those, Dr. Lutz?
Yeah. So our state tennis team went to Cary, North Carolina in late June, and I'm happy to announce that they won the conference for the first time in 20 years.
Wonderful.
Marley Renner was the only lady to advance to the state and she lost in the first round, but we had someone move on.
All right.
State wrestling tournament, we had eight wrestlers advance to the state championship, including Brooke Zach, who also won the school's first female state invitational championship.
Good for her.
And in track, the women's track won the conference and the men's track team finished second. And we had 14 athletes advance to the state championship. And although it took them three buses to get there, they had an outstanding showing.
Oh, gosh.
And we also, thank you, we also had the FFA Officer Camp in Crozet, Virginia, and that is always an exciting event for our kids.
Wonderful. Continuing to do great things. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move for the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a first and I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The consent agenda is approved. A couple of information items. We have our district convocation coming up August 17th, so mark your calendars for that. That's always, that's always a fun day, getting back in the swing of things and getting to know each other and all our new, new staff members. And we'll have a Board of Education meeting following the convocation, but the time has not been set as of yet. We will have our work session and that date is September 16th, 2021, and that will be held at NAP Professional Learning Center at 4:00 PM. Our Board of Education meeting is set for September 16th, the same day, here at the historic Currytuck County Courthouse at 6:30 PM. Ms. Peters, would you like to close with your comments?
Sure. Thank you. I just wanted to thank the Board of Commissioners for our joint meeting we had earlier, a few weeks ago. We pretty much had an update on all the building renovations and everything we have going on, and I thought it was a good effective meeting. I stopped at Moyoc Elementary School, just wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Kelly and her staff and all the maintenance workers, the IT people. It's not just that they're going to have this renovation going on, but they're having to move a whole building and set everything up. I mean, I couldn't believe all the work that was going on and everyone was, was doing a great job. So thank you to everyone involved in getting that moved done for, for those students to be ready in just a couple of weeks. Today, of course, was the first day at JP NAP. Just wanted to say I hope everyone has a great year there. I think as everyone's coming, it's been heavily anticipated and everyone was very excited and, and we're excited for them. So we hope they have a great year. I just hope that everyone in the coming weeks, as we do open all the schools, has a very safe new year. And I think we have a lot to catch up on, but I wanted to thank Mr. Griffin because it, it was really nice to start the meeting out with a really positive note, thinking so many behind-the-scenes people, because there's a lot of planning to go into any, anything, but this year or the past couple of years has really been a lot of work. So thank you for recognizing that. And I think that's, like I said, it's a lot of, I'm a parent and I know we're all anxious. I appreciate everyone who reached out to us about the, the mask on both sides. I read every single thing, took everything to heart, the text messages, the emails, the phone calls. And I appreciate everyone reaching out and, and showing their concern. And as parents, we still have to do our part at home too. So please talk to our kids and educate them and I hope we just have a safe new year. Thank you.
Peters, Ms. Rose?
Well, I'd like to give a shout out to our tennis team and our wrestling team and our track team. Hats off to them for their stellar seasons. I'd like to thank our sheriff's department who held some camps for, I believe, our middle school students this summer. And I know several students participated and I've heard lots of positive comments about that. And our Currytuck Extension Center, the director Cameron Low and her staff, who held the camp over at Knott's Island on Fridays. I know a lot of children enjoyed that as well. I want to give a big thank you to our retirees. Many folks put in 30 years and gave their all to our students and our students benefited, and I want to say thank you. And last but not least, I want to give a shout out to our own Bobby Hannig, our state representative. He sent me a message today saying that the House had passed an amendment to Senate Bill 105, which will increase the transportation efficiency buffer for Currytuck County schools, which will save us a lot of money. And it's something that was brought to his attention probably a couple of years ago. And he's worked hard on it and it looks like it's going to stay in the budget. And so now we're just hoping we get that budget through with everybody. But I'd like to wish our students, our faculty and our staff the most fabulous of years this year.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Dr. Dobney?
Yes, I recently sent Representative Bobby Hannig some information and personally talked to Senator Bob Steinberg and Senator Tom McInnes about two different topics. First was, I think it was House Bill 519, where the legislature was looking at disbanding the North Carolina High School Athletic Association and letting the state board and the legislature take it over. But what I mentioned, if the North Carolina High School Athletic Association was to still be in charge, that they need to require two things of them. One, develop a plan to put the student back into the student athlete, because some of our student athletes miss far, far too much school, you know, going to playoff games and that. And I know when Dr. Lutz was a basketball coach, how long was that trip you took?
Five and a half hours.
Five and a half hours. And I know, what was it now, about a year and a half ago, one of our teams traveled six and a half?
Yes.
And in seven hours?
Had to spend the night.
Yeah.
They won and then had to spend the night because they had to play the next day.
Yeah. Which brings up the second topic. We actually lost money sending these students to these playoff games. But who gets the first cut of money is the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. And if there's anything left, the schools get it. And I said, you need to make them develop a plan where there's a more equitable, equitable distribution of funds. Yeah, schools shouldn't be penalized having to fund our own trips, whereas the High School Athletic Association always comes out on the positive. And what has that led to? They have a $40 million fund balance.
Wow. That's a lot of money.
And that's more than some conferences have.
It's more than some conferences.
The other topic that I talked to him about was career technical education. And for some of the old timers listening to this, that was what was called vocational education in the past.
[laughing]
And I still believe that we're doing a disservice to our students by requiring them to take the three units of math. And the only reason that they would need that would be to go to college. Not only, you know, not, students don't need, some students don't need or even want to go to college. And if there was something that we could replace that third unit of math, which is, I think basically trigonometry and pre-calculus, Robert, you would know that. What's, what's?
Four.
Oh, they have to have four units? Well, there's that one-size-fits-all diploma for the college-bound kids and the kids that are left behind are the ones that want to, you know, get a vocation. And I still think that, well, I've got the ear of all three of them. And I know that Mike Paiment, the chairman of the county commissioners, is for trying to get a vocational, you know, track to a diploma put back in the curriculum. And I think our new CTE director is in the audience?
Yes.
Jennifer Wood? And you, I know you can help us try to get this accomplished. Just a minor task.
And all your other duties.
And with that, I would just, would wish all the teachers, faculty, staff, you know, a great opening to a new school year.
Dr. Dobney, you know, we've been talking about that for, for several years. So did you talk with them or email back and forth? What do we need to do to maybe make a formal request or official request to, to make this happen? What, what's our next step?
What was it, Renee? Was it two years ago or three years ago? We actually met with the state superintendent at the time and, you know, pleaded our case to him and he just says, well, you're speaking to the choir.
And then we met.
But nothing, you know, changed.
We met with Representative, Senator Steinberg as COVID was beginning. And, you know, he said, draft it up. Tell us what you want.
Well, and I think it's going to take a change to that report card, you know, the A, B, C, D.
Right.
Where we get penalized for math rigor.
Right.
If we give the vocational students, you know, the math, the vocational math.
Well, and another diploma track.
And they, they had two tracks, not so terribly long ago. I mean, was it three? I know my son graduated 12 years ago and he had a choice which track he wanted to go on.
I think it was, was it 2008 they did away with the?
ESEA Act in 2008, and then instituted 2012, started restricting and added the four years of math. And, and Dr. Dobney is correct. So we have begun those discussions and, and given everything that's gone on in the country, I think there will be some discussion around changes in those diploma tracks. When DPI came and visited us in February, we were able to forge a relationship with Free Bird McKinney, who was the legislative liaison. And so between Senator Steinberg and Bobby Hannig and, and Free Bird, we're hoping that we can get some traction moving forward. Some of it said, we just can't take that. Some of it was, this is not the time to take it on.
Right.
But we, it's, it's on my to-do list and will remain there until it gets crossed off.
Requirements are up for discussion here in the near future. I think it was in the next two years. So I think that perhaps we'll see some movement in there because it is a, it's a two-pronged issue.
Okay.
Graduation requirements and diploma tracks, and then it's a testing and accountability. And so I felt hopeful after the meeting that Dr. Lutz is speaking about, that the time's coming where we may see a revision to diploma track options.
Sounds great. Okay. Ms. Craft?
Yes. So I'm excited about the start of our school year too, and I wish all of you a very successful year. There's a quote that emphasizes what Mr. Griffin spoke about. Children who are loved come to school to learn, others come to school to be loved. So we realize and know, and our administration knows, that a lot of what we have to do this year is, is give them that love and, and concern. So I went to the summer school graduation on Tuesday. I was so proud of those students. They came to school every day, attending summer school and, and getting that diploma. It was just really, in fact, one of the parents, a man that I've known since he was a little boy, his daughter graduated and I turned around and was going to give him a high five, you know, great job, and he was doing this. So he, he didn't see me. But anyway, I'm really proud of those students because, you know, that takes some dedication. Also on Tuesday, I stopped by.
Also, on Tuesday, I stopped by Central Elementary and Shawboro Elementary for their kindergarten.
Open house?
Open house, the things that they were doing, there was a great attendance for this. I think you said about 90?
Over 90% across the district.
Over 90% for the entire district. So every elementary school had that going on, but I only got to two of them. And then today, I attended convocation for JP NAP. It's a great beginning for them. And like you said, we're thanking the commissioners and all of the, Currituck's just a great place to live.
It really is.
My parents took me away from here when I was like 15 years old, and I stayed for a while in Florida, but I went kicking and screaming when they took me, and I came back as soon as I could. So Currituck's a great place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craft. Dr. Lutz?
I wanted to give a shout out to our teachers and Ms. Harrington and all the building leaders, technology and Sandy who never got a break, and hasn't since March 13th of 2020. The work they did in summer learning was, I think, very special. We had 139 students enrolled in K-5 for the duration, not counting the reading camp, and we had 70% of those students proficient or mastery in English language art. 60% of our math students at that age were saying proficient or mastered, and science was 90%. In grade six through eight, the total enrollment was 107, and we had 92 that completed the program. And again, we had identified at-risk students. These were, these were, we invited them because we knew they were struggling learners. So that was very exciting. And when we get to the high school, and Ms. Dowdy pointed out to me that she had never seen so many credits regained as we saw this summer. We had 242 credits recaptured during the course of the summer, and as Ms. Craft mentioned, we had 12 seniors graduate. And I said, I asked them, "If you understood the word perseverance," that's what they were doing, because it would have been very easy for them to walk away.
Sure.
And be searching for their GED, but instead, they stayed the course and graduated, so congratulations.
That's awesome.
Couple of other items. We are continuing to hire, while we post our positions, we have, we've been very ambitious in our hiring practices in May, June, and July. We have about five traditional positions currently open. If you know any EC teachers, please reach out to them. We are always looking. The, again, thank you, Bobby Hannig, for pushing forth the bill with transportation. The joint meeting was, I think, a culmination. It was, it was great to be visioning for the future, recognizing the present, and most of all, our boards working so well together. Currituck Kids on Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00 at the, near the YMCA has a great event. It's free. There's going to be bounce houses, there's going to be a lot of fun, there's going to be food. You can sign up for your bus. We'll have a, sorry, we'll have a table there. Please come out. Again, that's Currituck Kids, 11:00 to 1:00 by the YMCA. And finally, welcome, we're looking forward to seeing our staff back. Can't wait for convocation, can't wait to see kids. It was a bit of a shock this morning with JP NAP because we haven't seen that many students together and on campus for a long time.
Yes.
So it was a great sight, and we look forward to more of that. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lutz.
Karen, I forgot one thing. I would just like to say it was very nice seeing the principals and directors back at the work session today.
Totally.
Yes, it is. All right. Again, you know, I'm going to echo some of the sentiments of my fellow board members, but kudos to our county commissioners and to our county manager. We had a joint meeting. It was a success. The vision, the plan that we have put together is a wonderful plan. I think everybody will, will be so appreciative of, of the efforts that they put forth, the school plans, the renovations, they're beautiful, and it's something to be proud of for Currituck County. Welcome back to JP, our JP NAP students, early college students today, was their first day, and they're excited to be there. I think the staff is gearing up for another successful year. All of our newly hired staff, I'd like to welcome you to Currituck County schools. We're glad you're here. The summer has flown by, and I can't believe it's already August 5th. I hope everyone has soaked up the sunshine and that you've made lasting memories. And with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you and have a good night.